Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to an end. Our agenda board meeting, the board trustees of East Central ISD will be held May 16, 2024, beginning at 6:00 p.m. in the East Central High School cafeteria. 7173 F B 1628, San Antonio, Texas, 78263. During 16, our meeting with the East Central ISD board trustees will be held in person at the East Central High School cafeteria. A sign up sheet for public comments will be available at the door. Anyone wishing to make public comments must sign up prior to the meeting starting. The subjects to be discussed or considered, or upon which any formal action may be taken, are listed below. Items do not have to be taken in the same order as shown on this meeting notice. Unless we move from the consent agenda, items identified within that consent agenda will be acted on one at a time.
Yes ma'am. Ginger Freezenhunt. Victor Garza.
Here.
John Massagel.
Here.
James Mulkey. Dale Brazil. Myself, Leo Carrasco, I'm here. And Monique Crisiss. Madam President, we have your form.
Is awards and recognitions Mr. Tuscano?
Yeah, big night tonight. We're really excited to have all of our employees who will be recognized for their years of service, including our retirees. So I'll turn it over to Mr. McKay to let us know how... Oh, I'm sorry. Praying pledge. Mr. McKay.
Mr. Tuscano, present address is trustees and students and families. Welcome to East Central High School and welcome to all of our special guests to this beautiful night of celebrations. Celebrations of our service, our loyalty, and our commitment to the East Central Independent School District family. I am also our high coach and proud principal of East Central High School and it's my honor to be with you this evening. And I'd like to invite Cadet Command Sergeant Major Giselle Flores to the podium to lead us in this evening's prayer. Giselle.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand in the environs for this prayer. Dear God, thank you for this amazing school board and staff and bringing us here today. We pray for success and unity in our school and outside of this community. We thank everyone that has worked hard for this school and for this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Giselle. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the presentation of colors by the East Central JROTC color ball and then the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas pledge. Carrying the American flag is Cadet First Sergeant Michaela York. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Sergeant First Class Tatiana Johnson. Guarding the American flag is Cadet Private First Class Canyon Colas. And guarding the Texas flag is Cadet Captain Marcus Sanchez. And now the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas pledge led by Cadet Command Sergeant Major Giselle Flores.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with religion and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may now be seated. And again, thank you, Giselle. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the many organizations that greeted you today as you came in through our gym too. We had our dance community squad led by teacher Ricky Calumner. Drumline led by our band director Ron Bar. Our electric on team was there and led by teacher Forrest Hawthorne. Our mariachis led by Jose Millerian. Our fashion boutique was on display led by fashion teacher Sherry Myers. Our M.O.S.A. organization and sponsor Terry Yertega. Our construction tech students and teacher, Mr. McDaniel. Our student athletes coordinated by Joe Hubbard. Our JROTC led by our JROTC senior army instructor Lieutenant Colonel Terry Geron. Our STUCO led by sponsor Mary Jo Johnson. Our ad program led by Mrs. Kimbin and Mr. Pesler. Our PTEC school within a school. Our piano classes led by Dr. Warren Myers. And I would like to invite you, if you want to continue to explore more of our amazing students' work, our audition art fairs on display, and our past our Performing Arts Center for the Music and Art Showcase. And that is from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. this evening. This evening, please join me in exploring the many gifts our students have created for each one of you. Board members and superintendent, Mr. Tuscano. Your baskets in front of you have been hand woven by members of the EC real team and created in part from materials found in our pollinator Paradise Garden. Both of these locations are maintained as outdoor learning spaces thanks to the support of our school board and administration throughout the last 14 years. You also have some EC cookies that are compliments of Ms. Cork Meys's practicum classes. You have a plant with a painted pot and appreciation token inside the pot. They were created by our student council members. Our EC artists have created a custom portrait of your beloved pets as a forever memorial and to honor their devotion and dedication to you, as well as your devotion and dedication to our district and our students. A meet the artist page is on the back of each work. It tells each of you who your artist is. Each of you has also received a stress bottle conceived and created by the amazing students and our TAPY, our Texas Association of Future Educators organization led by Miss Karen Vitor and Miss Marie Louise Colzer. Our future health professionals representing POSA, which is a global student life organization whose mission is to promote career opportunities in the health industry and to enhance the delivery and efficient quality healthcare to all people, put together some emergency first aid kits for y'all. Mr. Hawthorne's manufacturing and technology course students fashioned you a good old EC Texas keychain for your spare car or truck or house. So you can always keep EC in your Texas heart. And backed by popular demand, Mr. Danny Kimbin's FFA and agriculture science students took a lot of fresh batch of beef jerky. And last but not least, our students from the Spanish National Honor Society, they put together a bag that includes items which represent our Spanish culture. This includes a concha, which is sweet bread, a jaraco, a mini Mexican flag jug, some posters of the Mexican ethnic floral designs and a pin from the society. I think y'all are set now. On behalf of Erica Jackson, Cass Lee, principal, and myself, I want to invite you all to the class of 2024 faculty mission on Tuesday, May 28th at 2:30 at the Alamo Dome. Of course, because after Memorial Day weekend, so make sure y'all have a safe and happy holiday. Mr. Tuscano, before I turn it over to you, I just want to say thank you personally to our board members for their hard work, continued sacrifices, and leadership. On behalf of all East Central High School, we are truly grateful for your commitments to our high school students and families and we're very, very lucky to have each of you. I would also like to take a moment to thank our parents and our guardians and our grandparents and our godparents and all of those that are here tonight with the student or one of our student organizations. It truly takes all of us coming together tonight to unite as a family, to achieve such successes. And it takes a great leader to lead this family. So with that, I turn it over to our great leader, Mr. Tuscano.
Okay, the next thing we have is awards and recognitions. Now, Mr. Tuscano.
Did I mention this is a really exciting night? We're here to recognize many of our employees for their years of service, as well as our retirees. And welcome to all of you. Mr. McKay?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing many exceptional staff members at EC ISD who have reached a milestone in their careers and service for our community. We are honored to recognize our employees and on behalf of the EC family, congratulations to each of you on achieving this anniversary of the district. This evening, we will celebrate each of you and the 2,402 years of combined service that you have dedicated to East Central. Can we give them all around a applause? Some may have come to us right out of college and others, they may have already had 20 years of experience, but all with a burning desire to have a positive impact on the lives of children. Without doubt, whether they have been here for five years teaching in a classroom or 36 years riding a school bus every day delivering our students with a smile, our loyal EC staff are being recognized because they shape the future and are difference makers in our community. So our first group that we would like to recognize are our five year service award recipients. With our five year honorees, would please line up towards the back, to the back off to your right, my left. We can see faculty officers are there to keep you safe. So when you guys line back up there, if you haven't picked up your name card, make sure you pick up your name card and go ahead and begin lining up. So our five year honorees, heads in the back. Once we get everybody all, explain the process. So as they're lining up, I'll say that we have 68 family members who have contributed over 340 years of service tonight in this room. So recipients, what we'll do is Mr. Oliver will call your name when you hand them your card. They'll walk down the red carpet, enjoy the moment. When you get to the front, we'll get an opportunity to shake hands, receive your token of appreciation. We'll stand for a picture. Once you take a picture, you're going to exit to your right. So we go around on the other side of this curtain. We have a riser over there. We're going to take a group photo, but every group has been called to go to the back. Once you've taken a picture, come back enjoying your family. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Oliver to start with our first five year.
The first five year recipient is Frank Almeida. Brittany Colombo. William Tony. Francisco Salinas. Nina Cordinas. John Gonzalez. Lisa Stalvin. Shaila Brown. Erica Byden. Alexandria Estenosa. Martha Villanueva. Ariana Monta. Carolyn Soto. Jorge Carrasco.
Last but not least, Brandon Oliver. We always want to recognize the family and friends of our honorees because we know the kind of commitment and sacrifice that it takes to serve in public education. We cannot be successful without an understanding and support of family and friends standing behind the scenes. So at this time, will any family or friends of our five year honorees, please stand so we can recognize you too as well. Please stand in front of the line. For our 10 year honorees, we start to head to the back and line up to your right, my left. Very happy to have you. While they're lining up, I'll let you know we have 34 total across the district that have committed 10 years of service for a total of 340 years of combined service to the district.
Westley Eschler. Kathy Parrish. Antonio Ramos. Kyla Baca. Kikuli Farjeh. Deborah Cardenas. Vicky Chavans. Rida Duvies. Melissa Perez. Samuel Dogan.
Will all the family and friends of our 10 year recipients please stand so we may recognize you as well. And we'd like to ask our 15 year service award winners to start their way to the back. While they're heading to the back, we actually have 25 EC family members across the district that have combined a total of 375 years of service.
First 13 15 years, Bobby Lanfes. Irelle Alarado. Lorna. Vera. Alexandria Alaron. Elaine Taylor. Brenda Miller. Mary Poplin. Stephanie Orsak. Crystal Albernier. Dale Carpenter. Henry Blosson.
With family and friends of our 15 year honorees, please stand so we may recognize you as well. At this time, we would like to ask all of our family and friends of our 20 year honorees to please stand so we may recognize you as well. Thank you. Last but not least, our 25 year honorees, please start to head to the back. We have a combined total of 12 family members who have contributed a total of 300 years of service to the district.
First 25 year recipient, Jonathan Holbert. Jaylen Hart. Dawn Thompson. Alice Martinez. Maria Castillo Jimenez. Nicole Brown. Donna Collins.
At this time, we would like to ask all of our family and friends of our 20 year honorees to please stand so we may recognize you as well. Last but not least, our 25 year honorees, please start to head to the back. We have a combined total of 12 family members who have contributed a total of 300 years of service to the district.
First 25 year recipient, Jonathan Holbert. Jaylen Hart. Linda Pappy. Dawn Thompson. Alice Martinez. Maria Cordinas.
At this time, if you are a family or one of the 25 year recipients, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well? And move on to our 30 year recipients. If you are a 30 year recipient, if you could head to the back of the three district for a combined total of 90 years of service, EC ISD.
The first 30 year recipients, Sandra Hernandez. Jennifer Smith. Lenny Dyer. Lenny Dyer.
If you are a family and friends of our 30 year recipients, would you like to stand? Please allow us the opportunity to recognize you tonight. Thank you, children. So we're gonna do something a little bit different this time. If you are a retiree, would you mind just standing where you're at? Standing where you're at. Great time, everyone. So we want to end up, and we're just gonna just stand there and absorb this, okay? So we start with a poem. Educators are dedicated lives. They do more than required and work until overtime. But once in every generation comes an educator whose dedication is the source of inspiration and deserving of more affirmation. That's what you've been to us, so please endure while we make a bit of a fuss. We couldn't let you leave without making sure you perceive the respect that you have achieved and how you help all of us believe so sincerely in what we do with the utmost gratitude. Signed, every student who's ever walked the halls of ECI. So together here today, not just to mark an occasion, but to celebrate a legacy. A legacy built over 577 years of dedicated service, unwavering commitment and profound impact that can only be made by those who have devoted their lives to the noble profession of education. To the 24 remarkable individuals that we are honoring, we say thank you. Thank you for the early mornings and the late meetings. Thank you for the endless hours you've spent teaching, guiding, mentoring and inspiring generations of students. Thank you for your sacrifices that you've made, for the times that you've gone above and beyond, for the moments you've never given up, even when it seemed like it was the easiest path. Your loyalty and integrity have been the bedrock upon which ECIIC continues to provide a tradition of quality education. You've been more than just teachers. You've been role models, confidants and for many, a steady source of support during the most formative years of a student's life. The ripples of your influence extend far beyond the classroom walls, touching families and communities in ways that may never be fully measured. As you stand on the precipice of this new chapter, we want you to know that you will be deeply missed. Your wisdom, your passion and the unique spark that each of you brought to your work is irreplaceable. But even as we bid you farewell, we take comfort in hearing the impact that you have made, the thousands of lives that you have touched, the minds that you've expanded, the futures that you have shaped. These are your lasting legacy. So as we embark upon this well-deserved retirement, we celebrate you. We honor the tireless dedication and boundless compassion and unwavering belief in our students that has defined your careers. ECIIC is forever changed and eternally grateful because of you. We thank you on behalf of the countless students' lives you have touched, the colleagues who have had the privilege of working alongside you and the entire ECIIC community. Thank you for your 577 years of service, sacrifice and love for this noble profession. May your retirement be filled with joy, peace and appreciation you so richly deserve. Now you may go line up in the back.
James Tyler. Norma Real. Sharon Ratwitz. Alice Martinez. Sandra Burden. Stella Vasquez. Donna Collins. Tamara Girmala. Veronica Perez. Gloria Martinez. Karen Walchow Faulkner. Maureen Misteen Delwood. Last but certainly not least, Rodney V. Hill.
Would all of our family and friends, our retirees, please stand because we want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Family and friends, please stand so we can recognize you. On behalf of ECIIC, we want to say thank you to everyone we recognized tonight. I was asked to make a quick essay. We go for a break here in a minute. There are plenty of snacks and presents on your way home when you go to celebrate this evening, so I was told to just make sure that you all know that they were there and grab them on your way to go see the district art fair. Kind of echo that to you.
I just want to thank you all for being here tonight and just want to say this testament to the love and children and education quality here in this room and from the bottom of my heart, I'm sure my colleagues, thank you very much. We appreciate you. And I think you guys can just walk right into 6:50, so if you have to go home or have homework or have to see this, you can head out. Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to call the meeting back to order at 6:13.
Hi, I don't have anything to speak about this time. Just congratulations to all the retirees and service award members for service award awards. It was great. I wish, I was still learning. I wish I had a list, but then again, surprise, I was a surprise, so it was fun. Just give it a go.
I don't have anything this time, available?
Okay, I'll run through this as quick as I can, but uh... So we had an opportunity to go see the young ladies play softball and if you've ever had an opportunity to go and see, you know, they played with all their heart and they are a very young team, but boy, I tell you, you couldn't tell by the way that they played. I'm just excited to see them and be a part of that opportunity. And that's me. Oh, okay. There we go. All right, so I had an opportunity to go out and try to make all the campuses. I ran out of time. I didn't get a chance to go out to the high school, but I wanted to celebrate the heroes of the day, right? And that's our nutrition staffs. I had an opportunity to give them some donuts. I told them they were calorie free that day. And then the one on the right, this was Highland Forest. They had their Fiesta Parade. My grandson's took in that and we took a picture there in the park because, believe it or not, me and my wife made these clothes while we were at the softball game or headed to Liberty to see the softball game. So, you know, grandparents has a computer, right? So we had an opportunity and I just wanted to say a big thank you to Highland Forest and the staff there and of course the principal, she's amazing. And thank you, thank you for the way she just pours her heart into our kids. My grandkids are just in love with the school and of course with the teachers and principal. Thank you, thank you. I had an opportunity to go to the chaperone. This was the eighth grade dance. And we had a great time. Look at all those eighth graders coming to the high school here before long. And my beautiful wife there, she was working and I was, I was just having a good time. Uh, let's see, decision day, had an opportunity to go and partake of that and the two kids. It was the dinner, I'm sorry. This was the dinner and they had an opportunity to share, showcase where they're headed to and their future. So this is an exciting time and had some good food. I want to say thank you to all those that prepared that. And then the area playoff, this was a great opportunity. We went up to Liberty and just another awesome time. There's folks representing their... Then this one is the signing day. This was an awesome... I love going to these because you see these kids and all the hard work that they put in and then the future, their future, and then they sign. I like what they say, sign their life away. It's pretty easy. Then this was yesterday, we had an opportunity, well, I'm sorry. This is to the left. That was the spring sports banquet. All the sports, all the athletes and the awards that they racked up. I'm just amazed to see these young people and all the hard work that it takes. I'm still amazed at how much they pour into all the sports that they do, plus all the extra work that they have to accumulate, they have to partake in. And then the next one is the last one. My grandpa said, I'm also tired of the spring ball jamboree. They were out there getting all wet and throwing the football and running through hurdles and flipping and jumping. And then I had a couple of superstars there. I got to stand in the middle of and my grandson, that's Mr. Venky here to my right, my grandson looks up to this young man because he plays two sports. And I shared with that young man how he's inspiring my grandson. So I think it's just an awesome, awesome thing. And I think that's it, yes.
Okay, thank you guys for those reports and the next item on the agenda is the superintendent reports. 7.1 Personnel Report.
Ms. Ma'am, Ms. Ma'am President, trustees, in your electronic packet, you'll see the personnel report for the month of May. This will be the last report with very little to no activity. As is typical, we get into June, July and August, you'll see a tremendous amount of activity in the subsequent reports.
Okay, then the next item is 7.2 Bond Construction Update.
Trustees in your, Ms. Ladies' packet, you have a hard copy of the brief update. Mr. Thomas will also project that and provide the order of the update on where we're at with the construction project program. Mr. Thomas?
Good evening. Yeah, we're gonna give a brief update on where we're at with the bond projects. First off, with Honor Elementary School, as you can see here, we're starting to get some of the lighting. How does that?
More louder.
Do what?
Talk louder.
Yeah, just talk loud.
No, no, you can talk louder than the mic, all right.
Try that. There, all right. First off, Honor Elementary School, as you can see here, we're starting to get some of the topsoil, some of the trees in place. Some of that's starting to come across the front of the building with the panels as well, the masonry. You can see that we're starting to get lights and light poles out in the driveway. So when you're driving by, you'll see the road is completed now. There's signage that still has to go in. But we're getting some of that front done. Like I told you all last time, the back was really well done in the back of the building. You couldn't really see it from the road, but now when you drive by, you'll see that we're making some progress along. We're still holding to that July 18th date as long. Highland Forest, so you can see the driveway is substantially complete, which we're getting the fence in there. We had a slab four on Tuesday, so now we've got a slab in place for that addition that's coming along the back. So we're actually making progress there ahead of schedule. So hopefully we're gonna beat that car wash like we talked about. Lastly, Oak Press, we're starting to break ground there, so we're excited. You know, like I've mentioned in the past, we had some permitting issues that have helped us up a little bit, but I think we're gonna be back on track there as well. So we're starting to do some dirt, we'll see some things happening. We'll see some things happening. Not so much from the front, but if you were to go around the back of the building, you would see that. Beyond that, next month, we're going to bring you the plans for the transportation facility. You kind of go through that in detail so you all can see some of that. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
All right, the next item on the agenda is personnel update.
Ms. Ma'am?
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Tisano, President, Presses, and members of the board. I am here this evening to give to you the board goal update for the personnel department. So for priority one, teaching and learning, the goal for this year has been around attendance for both staff and students. And so the work in our department and part of the DSS for substitutes was really working on trying to get all of our vacancies as far as when teachers are out, getting those positions filled so our classes either don't have to double up or stay empty. So if we look at data from last school year, '22, '23, looking at a fill rate, so those are the positions that were actually filled with substitute where the class didn't necessarily stay empty, but you know, we had the cool people to fill and cover for double up classes. Our fill rate was at 77%. And so we knew that going into this year, we just really need to have some good conversations with DSS about, you know, what if we need to build our pools? What is that going to look like? So they've done a lot of tremendous work this year. When we look at our fill rate for this year, we're sitting at 89%, so a big increase from last school year. You know, pretty much every day, we're sitting at about 90 to 95% fill. It was 150 to 100%. We were so excited. Every position was filled that day with subs. So we're in hopes that by the end of the year, we gather that data, we'll be close to 90 and not a little bit over. We were also tracking staff data. That's something that we do every week, looking at each campus. If the campus reaches 95, that allows our employees an extra bonus if they also have work with attendance. So that's just something else that we've also been looking at every week as well. For priority two, teaching and learning environment. Our work around that is all about recruitment, teaching, and strategic staffing. So this year, we were very fortunate to start a residency program with a partnership of a company or a program called US Prep and then UTSA in Texas A&amp;M San Antonio. So this partnership has allowed us to have residents for a full year. So historically, residents would be considered student teachers and there would only be for a one semester, either the fall or the spring. These residents were with us all year long. It was a paid residency. They were assigned a mentor at our campuses of the Con Valley, Oak Press, and Sinclair. And so those, we hired six, seven, I'm sorry, seven residents. And of those seven residents, they just completed their cohort. We have a celebration on Tuesday. Of those seven residents that we hired at the beginning of the year, we are hiring six of them to teach full micros next year. We are so excited. At our gathering on Tuesday, the mentors could not say enough about the program and how they feel these teachers are so prepared. We have a couple of principals in the audience and I see this on the other side. Yes. And so we are going to continue with that program. We hired six residents mid-year. Two of those residents are sitting in our dual language classes and they will go up until December. So they're January to December residents for next school year, '24, '25. We already hired 12 residents and so they will be strategically placed throughout the district, really looking at campuses that may have some vacancies that we may not be able to fill or hopefully we will. But if we have that, they will go into those vacancies and be partnered with a teacher and allow some flexibility in how to classify this as well. We had our recruiting events and those have been much better attended this year than they were last year. So I think we're starting to see a swing to the pendulum of people coming back ready to come into teaching. Last but not least, teacher incentive allotment. That is another recruitment piece that we've been working on this year. Ms. Lauren has been gathering data throughout this year that we will submit in October to Texas Tech for review. Once they review that data, they will announce early spring of 2025 where they were awarded the TIA allotment. And then later in the spring, you will actually get the designation for those teachers that meet the criteria for teacher incentive allotment. So inclusive and collaborative partnerships I mentioned on the last slide, working with US Prep, Region 20, and in San Antonio and UTSA with our residency program. There was a lot of work that went into that with one of our coordinators, Ms. Lightman. And so we felt a lot of that's been very successful for us this year and it's been mutually beneficial. Some of the other partnerships that we have are with Teacherly, one of our alternate certification programs. We continue our work with Holesworth to work on our leadership pipeline. Our summer entrant program, we partner with CCMR to get all our kiddos working this summer. And Branch Ed is a program looking at strengthening teacher preparation by collaboration with districts and universities. Also internally, I meet with all of our departments and campuses quarterly, sometimes quarterly, but that's also a part of the board and our department. Priority four, we have worked within our budget for this fiscal year and we're going to continue to work on that strategic staffing piece, looking at if we do have vacant positions and we have these residents, what we would say collapse a vacancy, maybe make one class a little bit bigger and lower the class numbers to some of the other classes. That class, with a bigger class size, we have the resident and the teacher and it would definitely save us money because our residents, we go in less than half of what we would pay a teacher, sorry, so. And looking ahead, we're going to continue to support the rapid growth of the district with a focus on recruitment and teaching and strategic staffing. We're going to continue to sustain and expand all of our internal and external partnerships to support all of our stakeholders in East Central. And I just cannot end, I need to end this with it takes a team. These group of ladies right here keep us running and they keep us running so efficiently. And all the work that we have put in this year, it is all because of them and I just felt like I needed to give them some credit this year, so. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so very much. All right, the next item is the set for benefits risk management department update.
Turn it over to Ms. Burns and her slide deck is also here. Ms. Ladies' pack, if you prefer, follow along that way.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Presses, Mr. Tisano, and board of trustees. I'm happy to provide to you with the risk management department update. For priority one, we focus on providing tools and resources and education to optimize the teacher's time in the classroom. This year, we rolled out MySchoolDucks, which is an online payment solution to collect our fees for payment activity funds. We have many dedicated teachers who spend a lot of time and effort beyond the classroom, serving in extracurricular activities. And these activities often involve additional cash handling. The online payment solutions have direct time-saving impact on not just response rates, but also providing risk avoidance and parent convenience. We also like to keep our teachers in their classrooms so word-related injuries can have a direct impact on the teaching and learning environment. Our goal is to continue to work with campuses and departments to keep staff safe and at work and continuing our return-to-work programs. And February, East Central hosted the... Okay, the TASB, no, that's better. Okay, the TASB regional meeting with other districts to discuss best practices and legislative updates for risk management and school safety. For priority two, the benefits department continued to connect staff to benefits and resources to help with their health and wellbeing. We're in the fourth year of our self-funded medical plan and it's really going great with the addition of the nurse practitioner. This year, we were able to extend hours to accommodate the increased amount of participation by our staff. Kerry TC says that we have a high utilization rate for our clinic over their entire block of business. Every month, we receive survey responses. They're anonymous responses. I have to say that it really brings me a lot of joy to read these responses that we get every month consistently. The staff love the providers, the nurses, the doctor, and the nurse practitioner at the clinic and they express how much having access to this free primary care has been life-changing for them. We're in the process of conducting our third annual personal health assessment campaign. Kerry TC was on-site to our campuses and departments from May 2nd through 10th and they completed over 495 personal health assessments and they'll continue to provide those in the clinic through the end of May. And then patients receive their results through the patient portal and the app will signal to them whether their results are good, approaching concern, or that they're in the red and they may need to see a medical provider to address any issues that are going on. Covered spouses are also able to participate in the KHA and so my husband's getting paid here for me, but there you can see the nurse in the background and she looked like she's really in a fish and so she said him getting stuck was paybacks for all the fish that he's caught. So it was really neat to see the staff on the clinic interacting with the staff at the campuses because they have a relationship with them. We've provided telemedicine to all our employees and their dependents for the past several years and this year, we were able to upgrade that to include free behavioral health telemedicine. And so you can see that we have a really high utilization in medical visits and that indicates that our staff are engaged in using the convenient and effective services. And this has a direct impact on cost savings for both the member as well as our medical plan. And the behavioral utilization also indicates that our staff are utilizing this service. We also implemented VERDA for members covered in our healthcare plan. The program is a type-two diabetes, pre-diabetes, and obesity reversal program designed to control the disease through dietary changes with the goal of reducing or completely eliminating the medications. Members who engage in this service, they receive started kits with testing for A1C and their weight and they receive continuous medical supervision throughout the process and they have a dedicated health coach to guide them through the program on the online app. I just want to say it's very rewarding to me to have staff personally reach out to me to share their expenses, experiences with all these resources that we have continued to provide over the past several years. They express their gratitude to the district for providing these wellness resources. For priority three, I'm very honored that the business office helps support the East Central School Foundation. The foundation board advisors and a group of volunteers are amazing members of our community who donate their time, effort, and money to help support the annual foundation gala, teacher mini-grant fundraiser, and in 2022, they introduced another fundraising opportunity through the duck drop, which is really fun. And 51 mini-grants were awarded for a total of $178,000 last year through the foundation's effort. I have to say it's very rewarding to read through a lot of the grant submissions. It's a testament to the district that we have teachers who apply for these mini-grants because they want to go above and beyond and provide additional learning opportunities for our students. And here's just an example of two. We have the robotics club who received almost $8,000 for robotics kits. And then we saw Highland Forest purchase a vending machine for books. And so kids can receive free books as a part of their positive behavior reward system. So for priority four, continuing education is an important component of fiscal responsibility and optimizing our staff performance. In February, I was able to attend the TASBO Engage Conference while with some of my friends from Maintenance. Don't know if they're here. But I had the privilege of attending informative sessions and certification courses, particularly around changes in property tax and some other key advanced financial concepts. In April, I attended the TASB Leadership Members Conference and I was asked to serve as a panelist for one of the information sessions for challenges in risk management. So it was an honor to participate in that as well as to learn from other school districts. Property coverage was a hot topic at the conference and with the large number of storms that we've had over the past decade in Texas, the fund is educating members on how to make careful decisions regarding the choice and quality of roofing systems and HVAC protections, such as the use of hail guards to protect the expensive HVAC units from the ongoing hail that we seem to experience regularly. And then the business office is in our second year of hosting quarterly lunch and learn sessions. The topics range from budget, finance, payroll, and benefits. And we invite all of the department and campus secretaries to attend and it's a great opportunity for us to connect in person with them and just continue that education piece of our policies and procedures. In conclusion, we'll continue to connect the staff and their families to benefits and wellness programs, continue to search out strategic plans for maximizing value-added benefits for our employees, and then supporting the staff and students of our very best growing district. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so very much for that. Good. Moving on to the next item, it's seven point five, trustee department update.
Yeah, turn it over to Ms. Rokus.
Okay, this is going to be kind of hard because I've got my hands and so if this thing starts flying now, I'm sorry. Basically, I'm here to again today to talk about purchasing department and what our focus has been for the '23, '24 school year as well as projections for the '24, '25. This time, I'd like to make you a little bit of a report where we're at regarding our SR funding. We are currently on target and to expand our third, excuse me, SR3 funds. This is the final year of that. Last year, we were sitting right at two-thirds for the three-year grant. This is the third year and we're right on target. I would like to say that I can confidently project that 100% of our staff, our students, have been in some way indirectly or directly impacted by these funds from that of the HVAC facilities building to other types of curriculums, other types of safe professional development for social emotional learning, or that of instructional practices to address the COVID learning loss for our students. In addition, at the beginning of this year, we did expand 100% of those SR2 funds. They were aligned to at the end of August 31st of 2023 and we did expand that. So I just want to make sure on public record, we did expand all our SR2s as well as again projected for August 31st of 2024 to expand. So to me, that's like a happy birthday to me. All right, high performance engaging. We really did focus on making things better and how we ensure that our staff with the trenches are knowing exactly what needs to procure our goods at appropriate rate, as well as know about state, local, and federal laws regarding that. We are at 100% retention between the warehouse and the purchasing department. That is good news since we started here at 40%. But when you only have five people and you lose three, it's going to get that percentage. But we're all together and we're constantly checking each other. We're ready for that big, how do we say, race to get on our hood with all the procurement of those goods and items.
with all the procurement of those goods and items. And so we're really checking in with each other, making sure that we're staying mentally healthy to accomplish it. All right, with some partnerships. This really is where we're talking about our carbon footprint. We have recycled a lot of our particular types of technology, and we have, at this time, bought at least a little bit over $40,000 in terms of our recycle. We are also making sure that we have some partnerships from areas, businesses, that they've been able to provide us some different resources that they were starting at a very nice price at the spring. And we've been able to make sure they're good quality before we implement them into those particular areas, such as chairs for some of our child nutrition departments got brand new chairs. At the same time, we've got some technology that was donated through to CAS. And I also want them that we've been really working with all these task forces to commit and ensure that we're broadcasting the different types of messages and at the same time, ensuring that our staff are engaging in different types of events such as the next walk as well as some blood drives, and participated in here at just five K12, well, a same walk. Also, for resources, Operation Excellence, we are really working on looking at records management. This coming year, we're thinking about those type of ways that we can make them all kind of E files versus the paper files. What does that mean for our district to move forward, especially since we're supposed to be getting a new warehouse, and we know space is limited at the same time, and we want to make sure those records are maintained for their life expectancy, which is permanent, they're not supposed to be destroyed ever. So if we get them onto some sort of platform, that would be the best for our district. But I want to really lift up our warehouse department. They continually strive, we're seeing at 93.9% delivery rate between zero and two days. We're very proud of that. We also, at this time, procured over 623 purchase orders that have some sort of inventory control item attached to at least one, but most of those come in multiple. So to making sure those things are barcoded, and those are in our inventory management system, at the same time respecting and ensuring that we're not over-expending, but at the same time knowing where all our devices are. We did have a big focus this year to ensure that all devices, if they are to a person, are checked out in our full-let system, as well as we're working through our lunch corners, like Ms. Brance spoke about, ensuring our staff know how to check things in, check things out, so we cannot lose our inventory at the same time we're not overbuying. So in conclusion, resolve that staff retention, making sure we're staying mentally healthy at the same time physical, and it's ensuring that our departments work and collaborate with all the departments as well as campuses. We're also looking at the records and inventory management practices to ensure that everyone understands responsibility in that work, and it's a never-ending task, it just doesn't go away. And the last thing, just making sure we're forecasting, so when we're opening a brand new school and we're proceeding with that, we're able to make sure that there's something that we can potentially reuse or repurpose that will again that first. I do also want to lift up in conclusion, we are fixing to embark on another auction, and we probably right now have close to 80 lots that will be basically marketed within the next month. So that will hand-bring some money and revenue back to our general fund. Thank you. Any questions?
Anyone have questions? Last item on the agenda is 7.6, ACC Department update.
Chief Kuduski?
Okay, this President Superintendent Board Member's ranking. It's my honor to present, uh, too loud, right? Because I talk a lot. Present our quarterly report for the police department. On priority one, our teaching and learning department, we continue our mentoring program, especially in the elementarys with the campus officers, and part of that mentoring and interaction details partnering with our school administration and higher-risk students that are gonna need more talking to and some more support than others, making partnerships with the students on an everyday situation where students feel comfortable coming to the officers and advising them of maybe some family problems that are going on that's affecting them during school. Our officers have identified some potential problems at the home, and we will refer them to resources that we know, and hopefully we solve some of those issues. Lunch, I know Officer Rocha at Highland Forest had a big lunch program with his students over there. Matter of fact, they could look for him at the office, so we're so excited about that. So we can continue with that program. As part of their duties is doing our safety and security inspections, not only going around checking for locked doors, which is priority number one, but any safety issues that can arise out in the parking lots. They do priority check, take on equipment, especially in the elementarys for potential scrubs loops that can cause injury to our students. So that's part of their job, one of their hats that they wear on their campus, okay? Now, we also have a vocational program with Officer Elaine, the criminal justice program, and she had three of her students enter the Burke County Sheriff's Academy right after graduation. We're excited because Burke County Sheriff is the only law enforcement agency that a person can start working at 18. They can work in the jail at 18. Matter of fact, that's how I started in the jail at 18. When they turn 21, then they can be a Texas peace officer. So we're excited to partner with that. On our priority two, we continue with our active shooter training. We had to put some training days on hold due to our partners at the party departments' change of management. So the partnership that we have that says United Command System was put on hold. So we're hoping here pretty soon we're gonna get back to that. That's where some of the board members attended our joint training session was successful. And matter of fact, they did come in handy beginning of school year. Leading the way, first time in my career here, I had two people retired, two officers retired. So we are actively recruiting right now. There's not a big pool of candidates, law enforcement, it's very demanding. There's not people out there, so we're trying to recruit as best as we can to get the best people back into our department. I'm rounding the officers. Make sure they have the equipment that they need to perform the job that we ask them to protect our students, and also any other needs that they foresee or they need, and I can provide it or I can ask for it. Okay, our partnerships. Well, we continue with the sheriff and SAPD. Now, with SAPD, we have this handle with care modification where any trauma incident that hurts all school property, all school time, and it can affect the students coming onto campus, we are notifying, okay? Now, I also have another partnership with one of the sheriff's lieutenants at a dislocation that anything that deals with essential kids potentially after hours. For example, we had a fire out there in the southern area, IH37. I was notified right away, it's probably one of your kids. So we initiated EC cares and started supporting that family. And this is not just one incident, we've done that several times, and we're excited to continue that partnership. Southwest Texas Fusion, they're our intel. When we have any threats on our campuses, they monitor it, we work together, and we have been successful on several incidents. Our Burke County Office Management, that's the priority for our unified command. Those are our partners that come on here and assist us if we need to shut down a school or redo a reunification. They provide the resources that we do not have available. And we started with the General's Office Governor for grants, for active shooter grants, monies, and any resources that they were, they was providing funding. Okay, well, here we go, resources. Last year, we got bulletproof shields for our campuses through the Governor's Office. I found a resource uploaded by Houston on police vehicles. They buy used police vehicles all over the United States refurbished, and we're able to get them for almost half the cost of a new police vehicle fully furnished. That means lights, sirens, everything that needs for a police car. So we're starting to replace our campus clean. Our operation safety school, laptops and body cameras, those have been successful. And our radios that allow us to communicate with Burke County and SAPD are funded by Title IV money, working together, so no cost to the district. And we have direct communication with SAPD, Burke County Sheriff, to about any law enforcement agency for basketball, okay? Let me see what else. Any questions? We good? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the next item is 7.7, Chief, you're not going anywhere. It's ACCP racial profiling report, thank you.
This is Restless thinking. So my second report is our annual racial profiling report that's required by Texas legislation. So from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023, East Central Police conducted a total of 30 traffic stops. Traffic stops entail speeding school dogs, passing school buses, any other traffic violation that is observed by the officers. In those 30 interactions, 14 were African-American, five were white, and 11 were Hispanic. Those 11 were female, and 19 were male that were stopped. And there is no complaints of any racial profiling by any of our officers for this year. Well, every year. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you.
We good?
Good, thank you so much. All right. Thank you all for the reports. The next item is 7.8, a community this.
Ms. President, trustees, quick look at your May and June calendars, gonna point out a couple of things. Next week is extremely busy, as it is the last week of school. On the 20th, Lexon Wood School has its eighth grade recognition night right here on the Art Center at 6:30. Tuesday the 21st, FFA Awards, annual awards banquet here in the cafeteria at 6:00 PM. On the 22nd, Heritage's eighth grade recognition ceremony is at the PAC right here at 6:30. Last day of school on the 23rd, it's early release day. And then on the 24th here at the PAC, 6:30, which is next Friday, we have Cass Digg's graduation. And this is the first senior class, and so big night for that campus. On the 28th, the day after Memorial Day, 2:30, as BK mentioned earlier, beginning of the meeting, high school graduation at the Alamo Dome, 2:30 at the Alamo Dome. In June, want to point out that the week of the 3rd, the district goes to four-day weeks, 10-hour days, closed on Fridays. Board has a special meeting, EISO training at 5:30. We'll do that at the Student Services Building. That would be on the 11th, Tuesday, 11th, 5:30, Student Services Center. For a team building, it's basically Region 20, we're coming to provide some training for the team. And then SLI, I believe a few of you signed up for that, is the 12th, 13th, and 14th right here at the Maryup River Center. Your next regularly scheduled board meeting is on June 20th, 6:30. Also in your, this latest package, you do have the programs for the Cassidy graduation ceremony as well as the high school graduation ceremony. So take a look at those, if you have any questions, let me know. The high school commencement, Mr. McKay did what we do each year, he kind of tried to divvy up the graduates, and if you need to make any adjustments, we'll do that prior to that day, but that's the starting point. Take a look at that, you'll have an idea when you're approaching and out diplomas. And of course, graduate with the Cassidy group, there's, I believe, less than 40 elements, a small group. It'll be a little different, and we'll follow a similar format, but it's obviously very different due to scale. You have any answer for questions?
All right, the next item or section is eight, Action of Jilla 8.1, Heritage PTA donation, Mr. Tisana?
So, ma'am, trustees, Heritage PTA's been really busy this year. Their goal was to raise enough funds to put some water bottle refill stations on campus, and they raised enough money to purchase three at a cost of $6,361. Per board policy, CDC local, any donation valued at $5,000 or more must be approved by the board. Be happy to answer any more questions about that. If you guys can sit. Ms. President, I recommend the board accepting the donation from Heritage PTA in an amount of $6,361, let's present it.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the proposal as presented by the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
No, no.
The motion is made by Victor Garza in a second. Second is from Ginger Breezenon. Further discussion? We have a motion in a second to accept the item as recommended by the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. So that brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is adjournment. Oh, consent agenda, sorry, I'm really good. Okay, so part nine is consent agenda. Do I have any one that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? So the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Hold on.
We have a motion from Victor Garza, we have a second. We have a second from Millie O'Carosco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. President, before you consider adjournment, I'd like to have a big reveal. Mr. McKay has been busy with the community, and as we all know, Ms. Orset will be leading the whole community of Warren Elementary School in the fall. And her along with Mr. McKay, the community have been busy trying to conquer the mascot. Today, Mr. McKay.
Wow. That's amazing, congratulations for sharing. All right, so the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
I wish to like Victor Garza, we have a second. Second by Mrs. Breezenon. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all so much.